Remember, first meeting of the County Commission, first item of business is all of us.
Paul Lewis Office of Mary's Management and 911 Director, monthly report for the month of October. On the tower that we've been working on, the site is complete, the road into it is pre-occupied. As far as another, they've put a stone down onto that. And the need and hunt are currently gone, and the environmental assessments and railway survey on that. So, once they're done, then we should be able to start construction on that tower site. I've also put an order in for electric to go to that site, so I've got that done. And then I've had some contact with Hardy to all communication, because they want to put a lineup through there too. When we put the electric line in, they want to go in the same ditch, I think, if we go underground. I've applied for additional funding, like I said before, in the reselling program that's still at FEMA. It's been approved by the state, but FEMA is still, for some reason, it's still up there at FEMA. I don't know if COVID has some any disasters in the back of her. What's the problem is on that, but I haven't heard any more on that. On the towers, where we're still waiting on antennas, I just talked to Nate and Scott last week. They're still waiting on antennas, those antennas would be dealt from Australia. So, they're still waiting on those, a lot of those antennas to come in, because they need to replace antennas. Doug's on Helmut and Charlie's not, as far as the, on that. I've currently just hired a additional dispatcher on it. And he'll be used to fill gaps for vacation six days to cut down on overtime. And it's Kobe Hendrick from Morefield, and he'll be start training in the middle of November. And he's currently working the sheets right now, so, on that. Call volume during the month of October has had six hundred ninety-four calls. At the center, along with Department of Natural Resources, that is eleven. Party County Sheriff's offset two hundred forty-three, and the Morefield Police Department two hundred seventy-nine, with West Virginia State Police taking twenty-eight calls. EMS had the following calls, West Party, Ambulance Service had a hundred twenty. HCEAA had ninety-two, Morganville Rescue had twenty-three calls. Fire Department had the following calls, Caton Valley Fire Department had nine calls. Mathias Baker had fifteen calls, and Morefield Fire Department had twenty-five calls. And we have twelve calls, Department of Highway, manning on tree removals on that, during October. Under the Office of Mary's Management and Grants, I've met with Stephen Powell from Rockingham County EMS to discuss Nate and I had a meeting with him. He sent over a copy of the old MOU, and is currently rebuilding that MOU. So, it looks like we may be able to get an MOU between us and Rockingham County pretty soon, I'm hoping. And they're like everybody else short on personnel. I am waiting on approval, like I said, of the twenty twenty MPG that we sent in. And they're getting ready to send out some of the others, the twenty-one MPG also. I guess everybody's in OASIS, and they're working on everybody to get their apps in before they start giving the money, however on that. We did a folks' exercise in October, and we waited on the DPTU with the price come out December probably. And we'll go over that. I did do the exercise with my bits packed with TC Energy on the gas leak for both the vehicles and the gas line over in Bean Settlement area. I think they're firing us some dip packs of working that call for them. LIPC has met twice in October for the quarterly meeting, then we met to review and make changes to the current bylaws. And we're required to review those each year, making changes if we need to, and make sure that they're consistent with what the state is requiring now on that. The group will be working also to get more people involved into the LIPC, especially from the industries and stuff, Doug's working on it pretty hard on that. And then I had a meeting I will have, and have been meeting with the Department of Agriculture. They're going to be meeting at my center tomorrow to look at the status of the HPAI, and also to see if the layout emerged of these centers would work for them, if they need to set up a site for operation purposes, if they have a problem with the poultry in the area. So, they wanted to look at this facility and see if they have connectivity with their laptops and stuff. So, that one we're going to come on. And that's pretty much my report unless you have some questions on that.
Paul, what would the, that MOU cover?
That MOU will cover anything that we need on the upper end of Party County Mathias area and stuff. They don't really have too much staffing and burden, so most of the times if we land with anything out there, it's going to be coming out Broadway at the current time. They are looking at putting in, what, five new stations?
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, at least three of the five in the next five years.
That's EMS only, we only have the fire, uh, mutual aid.
Right.
How, what's the feeling on this, with the poultry issue? You think they will have connectivity?
I think so. I know Hardy moved in with lines to the armory. And then Frontier has moved in additional lines and stuff. So, I think with some routers and stuff, I think we'll be all right, we'll see tomorrow. Because we do use it when we have our exercises out there in the big room, so.
I plan to be there in the morning for that morning session, just to kind of hear what, what they've got going on. Because it's, it's as close as Pennsylvania in both turkeys and chickens.
Right. Do you want me to go over this consolidated?
Yeah.
On the consolidated public retirement for EMS and 911, the 911 council, all the 911 directors worked very hard to get approval that the 911 employees dispatchers can be added into the same one that EMS and paid bars people were into, which we pay a little bit more into, they can retire, I believe, after twenty years to age fifty-five. But what the legislators did, they were trying to push it through to where all current employees would be able to go into that program too. But legislators passed where just new REs would be doing one of that into that program. So, right now I've only got one and possibly two coming into that, so we can table that for now if we'd like to. Don't see any big rush into it. Some have signed off on this, some have not. I don't think it's, pretty much it, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on the list is Nate.
Morning, everybody. Nathan Kessler, Assistant Director, Party County Merc's Ammistoery. Uh, just briefly, a month update, uh, last month for October. Head total expenditures of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Head total revenue of eighty-six thousand, uh, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Sixty-five thousand of that being from the fee, thirty-three thousand, uh, ninety-three dollars, seventy-one cents fee from our billing services, and eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, forty-three cents from other incomes, like rebate, something like that, from our fuel cards and stuff. Uh, current checkbook balance is six twenty-two fifty-eight. We had ninety-two alerts, forty-eight transports. Call volume still remains steady, still averaging over eighty, ninety, probably one. Transport still hovering fifty, right around fifty. We did have our agency licensure, um, last week. Uh, we got the four-year license, that's the longest license you can get for the state of West Virginia. Um, and we, we went ahead and re-inspected all the ambulances as well, so they're all in service for another, um, what they are doing December, he has that early, so they'll be doing December again next year. Like Paul said, we met with Steve Powell from Rockingham, and you all heard that update. Click and purchase, we got some of the, um, the load systems in for the ambulances through Stryker. That's my big click and purchase. I'm working with a guy now to get them installed, um, to get West Hardy's and ours installed, because we both have cocks that'll fit them. Moreysville doesn't have one until the cocks come in. But soon as they get installed, we'll give you all an update. They're all three systems sitting over there in our, in our bays, and now just waiting for somebody to get to them. All vehicles in service. We gotta bring them to board seven-one, may need to mount it or dealt with soon. The motor has a slight knock in it. It's still, compression test still passed, but it's still, it's getting noisier and noisier and noisier, so we're going to address that soon. Building, update your report. And this town requesting is a drawdown of sixty-five thousand.
I'll make motion to approve the drawdown of sixty-five thousand.
Second.
I would probably move to second for the drawdown of sixty-five thousand. Is there any more discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite sixty-five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Did we get any more information on the roof? Did we get an estimate on cost of replacement?
Dave Constable's supposed to go up there, and I don't know if he has yet or not.
I'm not sure either.
Around all those pipes that come up out of the roof. For now, and he's supposed to give us an estimate on replacement.
Paul, but is there, is there a tremendous amount of pan panels and things around that roof?
I don't think there is, right? This is pipes and stuff, I don't think there's a whole lot of pan panels.
See, that roof had, because of the kitchen stuff, they also have the bins going out the ceiling too, out the roof. Plus, anything coming out of restrooms and bathrooms, because there's what, two bathrooms in the back plus one up front?
Had the leaks been fixed, at least temporarily?
I don't know, I'll get back to Dave, but he was supposed to go in.
It hasn't rained hard enough. Once it rains, once the downpour's come, that's when we find them pretty quick.
Did he, he, did he only go up to give the estimate, or did he go up to also? He went up to patch it as well?
Yeah. Dave, Dave said he would patch them for now.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Okay. But we just haven't had a hard enough rain to tell whether the patches will work.
It rained yesterday, but we didn't see anything through.
Okay.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it don't handle that much, right?
Yeah, like I say, don't let that go too far, because that only gets worse as time goes on.
And I did tell you, when he gives the price on, he gives the price, shingles versus metal.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No more questions for Nate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard, I got you next on the list.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning. Mine's quick and easy, I only know how to sit down. COVID numbers have been running single digits. We've got ten cases over the weekend. Flu is starting to hit A and B. We're still vaccinating all week long, basically. Numbers have been pretty good, people coming to get their vaccines, so, besides that, I'm hoping you guys, I don't know what else to say.
Are we still okay as far as hospitals, that's going, as far as pediatric and the?
Yeah, that pediatric, I know Winchester has some, but outside of Winchester, like you're looking.
That's RSV.
Yeah, and that RSV is rampant in the hospital right now.
I've seen, seen a report that the RSV for youth, young people.
It's starting to hit, that triple pandemics they're talking about. I think, you know, the RSV, the COVID, and the flu, they're all hitting at the same time, so. It's going to be interesting to see the next couple of weeks after Halloween last night, because it was crazy.
You know, you got Thanksgiving coming up too.
It's that time of year, so hopefully we can fight it and get more people vaccinated.
You've got some of your vaccine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Got a brand-new ultra-cold freezer bag down there. But besides that, I'm good. I'll answer any questions you got. I hope I didn't talk too much to the governor last week. Trying to get some money, boys, I'm trying to get some money.
Hopefully, we talked just enough.
Trying to get some money, yeah. Get that thing started.
Which you got that text message about, once they get back from their election.
But I appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I made it cool for you, man, it's not a hot seat now.
Won't be there very long. Not like, I don't have very much to report either. Our call volume, call red, runs about the same level we thought it would. Runs two hundred fifty, plus three hundred call a month, we just stay busy like that. Still working drug cases, Victor Self, forty-two in Morefield. He was sentenced this month to over twelve years for conspiracy to distribute methamphetamine. And we're taking those cages to federal court, and they're going to prison, those guys are for a long time. Part of our budget is, we're doing good with that. We may have a little bit of vacation time, get near the end of the year, trying to get everybody scheduled for vacation. We had it pretty well figured out until probably got hurt on Saturday, so he's off now on, um, just injury leave right now. I don't know how long he'll be off, even that pursuit takes that boy down over the side of that cliff. And they'll have to get him out of the helicopter, but he got kind of banged up over that. And as far as, you know, we may end up shift coverage, we can't get all the day, we may have to pay one of the guys or something a little bit extra to cover the shifts, to make sure that we come in under the amount of hours we're allowed to carry to the next year. So, we'll, across that bridge when we get there, hope it won't be too much, but. Part of the budget on the cars, JT's got those things all stacked out, and we'll come in just right after budget on. They'll be nice vehicles, they're fixed up, cages, everything, and so we're doing good in that respect. But overall, the guys are doing a good job, probably working hard every day. See them on the radar, get calls and compliments, and people emails, congratulate you, thank you for the job we're doing, and happy to see that.
Any questions?
Did we have a, we have a grant request in for vehicles? Have we heard on that one?
We've got, yeah, it's been, that vehicle's been ordered, those vehicles have been ordered.
So, we started the next cycle yet?
Not yet, no.
Also, we signed on a grant to the roof job.
Yeah, we haven't heard back. We should hear something, I think they said the first, the first weekend in November for the grant facility, the, um, courthouse.
First week of November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
No more questions?
Well, I appreciate the support you all together.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, then Logan.
And by the way, Matt, Moyn said he meant around the end of the meeting, he said. Go ahead and go ahead and make that conversation, he said.
Logan Moyn, Party County PSD. I'm here to update you on two projects that you guys are funding, uh, with the PSD, and to ask for some assistance on a third. I guess we'll start with the assistance. It's for our new facility project. We opened bids on that project back in September, and it had a sixty-day bid hold that expires at the end of, uh, I guess, on November sixteenth, about lower than two weeks from now. So, when we opened bids, we, the, uh, bids were over budget. We knew that they would be due to inflation and the, the amount of time that's passed since the budget was developed. We were two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars over budget. Now, USDA has agreed to provide that in the form of grant funding and a bid overrun funding, but they don't have that money available yet. They will have that money available, they have told us last week, by the end of next week. And as I said, our bid hold expires on November the sixteenth. So, uh, problem is, it takes several weeks to, for them to do what they need to do to award the funding once they receive it. So, they won't be able to award that money by the day our, our bid hold expires. So, what we would then have to do is go back to the low bidder and essentially renegotiate, or negotiate an extension of the bid hold. And what that often involves is a increase of five percent or ten, sometimes ten percent, depending on, you know, what your project number is. But that often means as much as six figures, um, on a, you know, a large project. So, um, what we'd like to do, rather than have to negotiate an extension and push the project further down the road, is get what is called a grant anticipation note, which is essentially interim funding. USDA again has told us that they will provide the funding, it's just a matter of time until they have that funding and can issue the award. So, um, what I'd like to get from you guys is the grant anticipation note, which is simply a letter that says, we'll provide this funding until such time as the grant funding is released, and, and then we'll be removed, and that funding will take over. So, what I'm hoping that you guys will, uh, do for us on that project is provide that grant anticipation note that will allow us to close before our bid hold date expires on the sixteenth of November. And we won't have a cost increase, uh, or a delay in the project, if that, if we can do that, so.
But with just this letter, you don't think we would have to write a check?
No, because they've told us they're going to give it, and it's just a matter of time, um, it's just the dates don't work out. They think that the award will happen in early December. And they said the award not for Thanksgiving, would happen before the end of this month, but likely it'll be early December, so.
Is when the money will actually be received?
Is when the grant will be received.
So, it's like, in that letter, you can, can you put a date? Can you put that we're approving it as an interim until such and such date?
I think what it says is, this financing will be in place until the, um, grant funding from the government is received, and at that time, this funding will be removed.
Should we need, when do you write that letter?
Or I think, I think Logan may have.
We draft the letter.
Do you like the letter this morning?
We draft the letter.
I make a motion, we, that, uh, letter is, uh, provided and presented by Logan for that, the extension and authorization for that, uh, grant, till that grant comes in.
I second it.
I would probably move to second for Logan's letter he needs. Is there any more discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite sixty-five saying aye?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
Updates on any of the others?
The, the other two projects that you guys are working with us on are the tank project, uh, on Northwood Morefield. That project has been out to bid, we had a low bidder. It was a good bid, um, so we're moving forward with that. We did have to delay the contract award, um, until, I think, December seventh, I believe, that's the place. And that's because the, uh, there were some concerns about the, uh, grading on site, and we had to bring in another structural engineer to do some work to, to give some of the contracts. There were some concern among some of the contractors about, uh, the grading that was required, because it's pretty steep. There where that tank's going to be constructed, uh, quite a bit of grading. So, December seventh, um, we'll be moving forward with that project, and it should go, uh, into construction next year and be completed probably in the fall or by this time, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the other project is the Baker Secondary Source, and, uh, you guys, I sent a letter, uh, after the last meeting, a letter of support to the Conservation Agency. We did hear back from them, um, and we are, we are working with, uh, with Thrasher Engineering, who's, uh, they've given us a list of things that they wanted to see us provide, to give them the comfort they needed to be able to say, go forward with your plan. And so, we're working to compile that information now. We've also contracted with a groundwater hydrologist who's helping us compile some of that information, and, and, uh, we'll get that submitted hopefully here, probably after Thanksgiving. But we're, once we have it all prepared, we're going to go with our engineers and our hydrologists and meet with some folks from Conservation Agency, some folks from DEP dam safety, and some other people, uh, I believe from in our CS and Morgan Town, and go over what we've got, and go over our plan, and hopefully at that time, or shortly thereafter, we'll get authorization from them to drill a test well, to see if the, the yield is there, and if it is, we'll move forward with our project at that point.
The, uh, I, I will thank you for pointing me in the direction of that bipartisan infrastructure, uh, legislation, and the part there that was talking about the public utilities, i.e. water. And, uh, it was excellent sleep material, because it reads like a, it reads hard. It's a hard read, but, uh, I'm, I'm still not done with it. And, uh, like I say, if I come across anything or, uh, find anything, I'll be getting in touch with, with you on that. Maybe if we need to make a few calls to our national legislative delegation, we'll put some calls in there too.
Oh, good.
I think there may be some stuff in there we can look at.
Are you making any headway on the new facility?
Yeah, and, and that's what the interim funding that we just did is for. So, once we, um, award the contract on that, which we should, we'll probably do, not next week, but the following week, we'll have a special meeting, and we'll do that contract award. At that point, I think maybe it'll be thirty days from then, their clock will start, and they have a year, uh, to finish construction. So, hopefully by the end of twenty-three, we'll be in our new facility. We'll be, we'll be five and a half years in the temporary trailer at that point, so we're, we're looking forward to it.
Any more questions for Logan?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Orin said give him two minutes and he'll be there. Orin said give him two minutes and he'll be there.
That's executive, we're kind of trying to do that in the same time we're going executive.
I don't think that it's going to be executive, the way he requested, he said it would not be executive.
Well, it does, if you don't want it, if you don't need it.
Yeah, I asked him that, he said no, that it should not be executive.
Can we go ahead and move on to our company contributions?
Yeah.
All right, there's contributions to the fire companies. We, uh, somewhere along the line, I think we got slid by us, and we didn't get it done in twenty-one. And we just kind of realized that. So, we're going to try to get it caught up. It's, it hit us quick enough, we don't have an exact figure yet, so we'll need just as an approval to do it, and then we put the plan together, I guess.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
All right, so I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve it with consideration for the exact amounts. And I'll second that.
Probably move to second for the consideration to the fire company's approval for discussion. Discussion, all those favorite sixty-five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Orin, you walked in right time.
Good deal, good deal.
You don't need an executive session for this?
Um, it might be better to go into an executive session for it, uh, just, just out of bonus caution.
Can he do that then?
I'm going to go into executive session.
All right, probably move to second, go into executive session, any more discussion? Ralph, monitor the executive session. I'm going to take a motion to move on.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, at the request of the Assistant Prosecutor, to, uh, allow them to go ahead and hire the temporary full-time, uh, legal clerk.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, probably move to second, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite sixty-five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Temporary.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Okay, uh, next thing here on the list, a discussion about the constitutional amendment number two. You want to talk about?
I sure will, I'll take that opportunity one more time. Uh, again, this year on the ballot, voters will find four amendments to the West Virginia Constitution to consider. And I would encourage all voters of Party County to become familiar with and learn what each of these proposed amendments, uh, does to, uh, them, or, or impacts that they have on them, as prescribed in the, uh, documentation. The Secretary of State's website does have information on all four proposed amendments, uh, to the Constitution of West Virginia. And, uh, I'll just read all four and then discuss two in, in a little bit more detail. One is the clarification of the judiciary's role in impeachment proceedings. And that one has to do with the legislature's approval to, uh, basically, uh, legislate. What the legislature does, the legislature does, there's no, uh, particular avenue of appeal, uh, for impeachment. And of course, that was brought out after the impeachment of the Supreme Court here a few years ago. Then number two is the property tax modernization amendment, which I'll go ahead and, and talk about here in just a moment. The third is the incorporation of Churches or Religious Denominations Amendment. And that one there, certainly, uh, those churches and other religious organizations should take a look at that to become familiar with that and how that might impact them, uh, as it's been described to us. There are some benefits, as well as some liabilities to that. So, I'd encourage those folks to go ahead and, and consider that, uh, a little bit closely, particularly churches and religious organizations. And then the third one is the education accountability amendment. And then the third one is the education accountability amendment and that one, of course, basically, uh, states that rules and policies promulgated by the state board of education must be, uh, subject to legislative review, approval amendment or rejection before they come into being. And, uh, so back to amendment two, uh, the property tax modernization amendment. Uh, as we said before, the Hardy County Commission has gone on record as opposing, uh, amendment two. And, uh, for a lot of reasons, amendment two is one that proposes to change the constitution by providing the legislature the authority, uh, to exempt tangible machinery and equipment, personal property directly used in business activity and tangible inventory, personal property directly used in business activity and the personnel, or personal property tax on motor vehicles add velorem property taxation by general law. And so, uh, that one there, uh, a lot has been touted about the, uh, the, basically the, the getting away or doing away with the motor vehicle tax. But there are five others that are included in that, which, uh, can affect or will affect businesses if this passes. Now, it doesn't say that the legislature will, it just says the legislature will have the authority to. And so, uh, from our standpoint, this takes away from the county and the county commission, uh, certainly local authority and puts it in the hands of the state legislature and, uh, particularly with this. Now, uh, they have, the legislature, I believe, is, uh, well-intentioned, uh, with what they've put forward, uh, with this. Uh, and I believe that this legislature will hold up the promises that they're making. However, this does not provide any insurance that future legislatures, uh, as they sit, will feel the same way about it. And so, uh, again, uh, we, along with, uh, the governor and baby dog, encourage voters to, uh, oppose amendment two, the property tax modernization amendment. And in the meeting that, uh, we had here, uh, with the governor, uh, the governor stated that his first bill, which has been written and will be introduced in the, uh, legislature of the state of West Virginia, when they open up, will do away with the car tax. So that's something to look forward to, one way or the other, uh, so that one's going away, it appears. Uh, but if that's the only reason that you're voting for it, then obviously, uh, you can maybe take a second look. And again, uh, the important part here is that it basically takes local control away, uh, from the counties and puts it in the hands of the legislature with regard to the monies that, uh, would be collected here locally from the vehicle tax. Am I hitting that pretty close? Any questions? I'll try to answer them. I'm pretty familiar with amendment two, the others, uh, maybe not quite as familiar with, but amendment two, being seated on board of directors of the county commissioners of West Virginia Association, uh, we've been working on this, uh, as board, uh, from early on and, uh, see this as, uh, a step not in the right direction. There are no questions, done.
No questions, who's moving on? All right, next order of business is, uh, order for county commission to move cares money from the financial stabilization to general county. This way we can reimburse the nine million hundred and eighty C A A and R S authority for that.
This is moving to the general county.
Yeah.
I make a motion that, uh, for approval to move this money that's written on the agenda to the general county.
I'll second that motion.
Moving the second, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right, then we're down to Wendy.
Greg, you picked, he brought that resolution up to you yesterday.
Oh, well, she did, I probably didn't get it, cause I wasn't at the best card there.
Okay. I haven't, well, I just printed one off, so if she, she said she was gonna bring the original, she.
She might.
Okay. The R D A, um, had sent over a, a resolution, I'm thinking yesterday, I wasn't here yesterday, but I'm thinking it was yesterday for an original, um, signature, but I do have a copy of it, if you guys wanna look at it. It's for the, um, the industrial park access, the business district of Robert Seberg Industrial Park, to benefit the future current businesses. Um, it authorizes submission of the West Virginia Industrial Access Road Fund Application for four hundred thousand dollars and unmatched supplemental w- funds for year twenty twenty-three to apply to the West Virginia Industrial Access Road Project underway and ongoing at the Robert Seberg Industrial Park. So if you guys wanna look over that and then we'll get the origin to you guys to sign that as well.
Yeah, we, uh, you know, this has been going on the whole time that I've been on the county commission. Uh, and every time we look in these bids, they're higher than they were the time before. And every time we go back to the, uh, uh, rural developer, economic development authority, uh, asking for the additional funds to get that to happen. And, uh, we actually, county commission actually kicked in a few thousand dollars to get them to where they thought they needed to be the last time. And, uh, because this.
Very same thing with Logan.
Yeah, the very same thing, they just keep upping it, but, you know, this is something that the state of West Virginia promised to American Woodmark when they opted to put their facility here in Moorefield. And, uh, like I say, they've, they've kind of hedged on this thing as it's gone on. But, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to work to get that, Malley's done an excellent job of trying to keep up and get the additional monies as this is going.
Over six years, cause it was working on before I came in the office. I was still on the planning commission.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this resolution to support the access road for the R C Bird Industrial Park, uh, and sign that resolution for Malley so that she can continue to look for those additional funds needed to get this job done.
Second. All right, probably move the second to, uh, do a letter of support to the next, for, for the R, for Robert Seberg Industrial Park access. Any more discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
We received the assessor's certificate of compliance, um, that Jimmy's office has completed the farm census of twenty twenty-two to satisfactory comply with requirements of the farm statistics law. He is therefore eligible to receive this compensation from the, the county court according to chapter seven, article seven, section six C of the Dakota, West Virginia.
Will we accept the assessor's certificate of compliance?
Second.
Probably move the second to accept the assessor's letter of compliance. Any discussion?
Yes.
Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Accepted it.
Um, Rig Civic Center and also Bean Settlement has, um, requested monies for assistance. Um, we got a letter from Julie Shoe from Rig Civic Center, they are requesting, um, nine thousand dollars for floor repairs. Their, um, their floors bowing in the kitchen and to put handicap rails in the bathrooms. Um, they are requesting actually ten thousand dollars, um, just to give them a, I guess, a little buffer, just to, you know, for lumber sake, the prices of everything today. Um, but their request for the Rig Civic Center is ten thousand dollars, um, from the A R P monies.
Bean Settlement.
And then Bean Settlement, um, is also, um, asking for ten thousand dollars to, um, replace their existing furnace in the building. And I believe they've gotten some es- they've got an estimate, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have the estimate here.
They submitted that bid to us with their package for the A R P request and we didn't act on that, cause we wanted to see what, uh, had been, but it was almost ten thousand dollars then, that was a year or so ago.
So they need to two replace.
And what, any more on the Fourth Pleasant Meeting House?
No, no, they won't put windows in, but they didn't get.
They haven't sent it.
No, he had them verbally, now I remember what to worry about.
Okay.
So are we doing anything in it now, or the tape will till next meeting or?
We, we get some written.
We table it till we receive something, so it just stays taped.
Just tape it till then, okay, so now we'll act on it, the rig and the Bean Settlement, can we do them both in one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you're not.
I obtain a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the Rig Civic Center's request and the Bean Settlement Community Center's request for ten thousand dollars each.
A second.
All right, we probably move the second, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Save the one, the, the, the meeting house.
Yeah.
Be a table.
Get hold of it.
Get, yeah, we'll get some things.
Get something, I think we just got a verbal from whoever's told the members for them, you know, but I'm, I'm trying to get something right.
Need to bring up something to you, Wendy, um, you need to enter from the county commission comments on the Department of Highway site regarding completion of quarterage. There's an open window right now, it's like, it would be, there's a date when it ends, um, I think I have it written down, but we have, still have some amount of time, but it would be good to, for us to put comments on there in support of the completion.
Just send me whatever.
Okay, I'll send that, those notes to you.
Maybe we get that to Hannah and she could put that in the paper so citizens could possibly respond.
That's true, that'd be a good idea. Um, also, uh, Wendy completed grant training, got a certificate from Eastern and, uh, she did check into gr- uh, grant funding for the dog shelter, additional space at the dog shelter. And we did find out that the USDA would be the best avenue for approving that, so.
Excellent.
Working on it.
I, I wonder, speaking of dogs, I, I haven't said anything to Jim, but I don't know, everything's going up. And I, I know he's been taking care of the, the, uh, dog food out of his feed.
Sometimes his own personal.
And, and I'm sure, you know, we may have to visit that and make sure he's got enough resources if this dog food and other things continue by the hand. And make sure that we've got, we've got him covered, cause apparently some of the donations that were coming in have slowed down. Or, or broken bags.
Talk to him and see.
Yeah, we'll find out, uh, uh, like I say, some of the broken bags that he was getting calls about, apparently they're packaging stuff a little tighter now and they're not getting as many broken bags.
I think that they're taping, one of them, they'll sell them for like a reduced price.
I think you're right, you know, I think they're, they're trying to move as many in as they can, so.
Also in discussing grants, I did talk, there's some, Tom, butcher, I noted about one, he was telling you about after that day, that there is grant funds out there that first energy gives up to, I think, five thousand dollars for anybody that's a nonprofit organization. And I'm not sure there's any specification one has to be used for.
I think.
Cause I think they gave one to Methage or someplace recently.
Well, they, they, they were gonna give one, I believe that was ten.
Could be, so you might wanna keep the note. I have calm to the motion.
If you would send that to Jamie, that would be great, yeah.
Uh, and yeah, nonprofits, actually, uh, the Virgins over there called him and they were working with him, they might get something.
Well, you know, we're looking at the season, you know, where people are gonna, you know, trying to earn money for heating and, I mean, whatever civic organizations and things like that, so.
That brings me up another thing, it's not only the general, I just got the question asked that we, I guess y'all remember, we still have three portable kitchens.
Yes.
That never been used, simply got those. I've had a request from the Old Royal Baptist Church wanting to know if we would let them take one of those down there to use at their facility. So give us some thought, they're just setting right now for the, the O H sheds.
Yeah.
Right.
Is, that, those are the ones that all the books were written in German?
Right.
All, they're, they're military surplus, but they, all of the guidebooks are written in German.
So they're German military.
While we go through to the new place, get somebody.
Yeah, we can translate.
Well, we do have, they were translated, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We did get that complex, we got them translated, so at least you know how to turn them on.
I was gonna say, my, my thought was, oh, we have M K Ts.
And we, some, uh, somebody was trained on those, remember?
I think the one Craig's boy used to use that type of thing when he was in the military.
Craig.
Craig, Craig, yeah.
Paul, do you have a inventory list of generators that you have? Somehow, I don't know, you could give us a little list and, you know, see if there's something that might work for, but what did you build, rescue squad?
I've got a small one that we used to have at the Wardville Tires, my smallest one, which would work for that facility, whatever it is.
I think what they just need is maybe lights, heat and something to keep their drug box cold.
What K W is, more check on that.
Thirty, thirty, what'd they say, thirty-eight?
Well, they had forty-eight kilowatts, but that's big.
Thirty-eight, forty-eight, I think they were.
I don't think it'd be.
The estimates were for.
K Ws, that's, that's considerable.
That's pretty good.
Most homes are eight or ten, so it runs home. Kilowatts.
More than forty.
Mm-hmm, both of the, I think all those estimates were for.
K Ws and watts are two different things.
And if you get them confused, you will cook all kinds of things.
Yeah, we'll see what you have and most likely from.
I've got two, but another one I'm saving for the Lost City Tower, but the other one's out in my yard.
Okay.
It's a smaller unit.
All right, all right, good one.
Thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
All right, is everything discussed now, we'll let Greg do his thing?
Good job, Wendy, thanks.
Thank you.
Gregory, you wanna take the floor?
Sure. We have, uh, orders barring objections to the estates of Maxine Hall Cross, Teddy Earl Decker, Gary Leo Fletcher and Kenneth Maxwell Riggman.
You need a motion to approve?
Yes, wish to approve. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the clerk's request for the order barring objection to the estates mentioned.
Second, all right, and probably move the second for the order barring objection to these estates. Is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I may requesting permission to sign a state budget revision to, uh, uh, partly to clean up some, but just like I had spent money out on my election budget for that grant that applied for, so I need to get that back in there, nothing negative in the year.
All right.
And, uh, and then these monies that were moved in general county, this will cover that for transferred in.
All right.
I'll check this out there.
I'll make a motion that we get permission to sign a state budget revision to Greg.
Second.
All right, probably move the second, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a renewal relief, uh, shoot, lease renewal agreement for the, uh, boat ramp down at the park, right, right, park.
Does that return any money to the park or is that just a?
I think it's just a, have our approval.
So it might have been already or something, if we're reading that, I don't remember seeing.
It gets a lot of use.
It does.
It's just a renew, I'll re, I'll make a motion to approve that lease renewal due of the agreement for D N R road, boat ramp at Breton Park.
I'll second.
All right, and probably move the second to, uh, renew the lease, is, uh, any discussion? Any discussion, all those favorite six five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Can I let you do, I do want to do a personnel executive session, but I'll let you do, uh, I think we'll face this out, cause I don't think, I told Hunter between ten thirty and eleven, but.
Oh, okay. We can, we can finish up the so stuff.
Cause we're not gonna make, I'm not requesting any, uh, decisions, I just want to bring you up there.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll let you sign that up there for, for any problem.
Please.
Man, this is rich land.
Top, top, yes. Number sixteen, one hundred and sixteen, so.
Thank you.
I want to get through this on the back of this first, a copy of the jail bill for the month of May. Month of May, is that right?
No, no. We're dead, no. I think the dollar's right.
The dollar's right. That sounds right.
For October, October?
Yeah, so forty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. All right, Farm Land Preservation Collective for the month of October, got that right. It's sixty thousand and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. All right, next thing on the list will be the approval of the minutes. Uh, approval of minutes for the October the fourth, two thousand twenty-two state meeting is. The full of minutes for the October the fourth, two thousand twenty-two state meeting is onerations settlements consolidation to order payroll registers, clerk's report of wills admitted and executives appointed, clerk's report of administrators, curators and committee appointed. I'm entertaining a motion.
Second.
Property moved to second, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those papers, six, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. There's really nothing unless you all have something you wanna ask to do. And we're gonna, we're waiting on Matt Mullins as the, uh, attorney for the opioid cases to kind of just give us an update, so we'll be in executive session now.
Could I bring up something? And this is nothing that, uh, really wants any immediate action or anything of that nature, but I think that it's something that part of y'all's discussion was actually leaning that way about, we've got all these supply chain shortages and things that are, that are coming up that we might just all keep in mind. And I just saw recently with diesel shortage, that they were down to twenty days' supply of diesel in the country. Uh, basically, for, for big truck hauling, for trains and for everything. Uh, in addition, that leaves us, and I heard you mention in the food pantry, you know, it leaves us with possibility of real shortages, not just, not just I'm a little bit hungry, but, but real shortages that are, that are coming up. And even leading into the spring, I think they're worried about a fertilizer shortage as well. I don't know how much that has been brought up, and I saw where you see, we probably see it most like with videotapes and things like that, the BASF, which is a major chemical company in, uh, Germany. It has a six-square-mile plant that's there. It produces all types of chemicals. I mean, and, and it's necessary for, they use natural gas to help create their, their fertilize also and things of that nature. That plant looks like it's gonna shut down for the first time since nineteen fifty-two and likely move to China as well. So I don't know what can be done on a county level or what can be thought of as preparation for what, what is, uh, coming up. But I would say twenty twenty-three is gonna be bare. And that's, just I wanted to bring that up, so you all might have, just to make you happy for Thanksgiving.
We, well, we, like I say, I, I serve on the community action board and, uh, food and food shortages have been high on our list of, of, uh, the meeting agendas. And, uh, support for the food pantry there is one that, you know, was high up on the list. And at our last meeting last month, we did also talk about that shortage that's projected in diesel fuel and heating.
Right.
And so, we talked about emergency heat and emergency utilities for folks that may be, uh, hit with, with high fuel bills. So, community action is, uh, in a position to kinda help. And so, that's, that's a good thing to know.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, so folks that may have questions.
Put on allocations on the woodbells last week.
But, yeah, the, the Farm Bureau, at the annual meeting of the Farm Bureau, uh, the president of the state's, uh, uh, Farm Bureau was there and he mentioned that, uh, basically, uh, fuel prices were expected to go to eight dollars. Diesel prices are expected to go to eight dollars a gallon by the end of the year. And of course, that's gonna impact everything.
Everything.
At food, uh, everything that we use.
I probably shouldn't say what business, 'cause I'm not sure the woman should have told me, but they were out of kerosene at that point when people were coming in, it was a, you know, it was a supplier down here, you know? So it's just, things are gonna get rough and I don't know what we can do, but if there is something that can be arranged, like you're saying with-
Yeah.
But there, but I think it's gonna be bigger than what we're expecting. That's the, that's what I'm fearing, so that, that's all.
I would anticipate, you are correct.
Yeah. That's all I had to say.
Yeah. Thanks, that's, that's a good point.
Do you, we just wanna do anything like a recess for a little bit, so he can teach you.
Good, let's, then Rhett, Rhett have anything to bring to us from Washington?
The letter of support for the, uh, sheriff's. That's already been sent.
Appreciate that.
I was ready to help.
We probably will need to get some sort of support for me for the dog, I don't know.
Now that you're the super duper grant, right? I'm ready.
If you've been there.
Send the email, I'll send it right on.
Hannah, any questions?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The, English is a good language. Like the access road.
Yes.
Is that political verbal or is that financial? Like the approval that-
The money that we're looking for is for the cost overrun through EDA, uh, through our state EDA, Economic Development Agency. Uh, and so that's where they go back to, to get the additional dollars to make this thing happen. But it, like I say, since I've been on the commission, every year we open these bids and every year they're higher and every year there's some holdup, uh, to where we, we get more money to put into it. But it was something that the state promised to American Woodmark more than six years ago when they did the deal to put the plant here, is that that access road would be, and then they've come back with other environmental studies that needed to be accomplished. And those have been done and now they opened these bids again, and the bids were higher than, uh, anticipated. So I think that this letter is to support, uh, the request from the ED, the West Virginia EDA for the additional money to let's get this thing done.
Okay, so this-
And that'll be good, I mean, for, I mean, if something happened on the road out there in front of, uh, Calendonia and you couldn't get trucks.
It needs, it needs to be done.
Either way, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's unnecessary, uh-
There, there is-
Right away.
There is unnecessary traffic.
Right.
Like, yes.
Yes.
Going up to the Catholic church and all that.